2013, would you all please rise for a brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight as the City Council meets in regular session, we ask for guidance and direction as we discuss and act on the various items of business before us. As always, we are mindful that in our world, we have many people who are doing many diverse things. Among them are a number of citizens of our community who are serving in the United States Military and the various branches, and we ask that a special blessing of guidance and direction be showered upon each and every one of them, along with all those others from our country who are serving us so honorably throughout the globe of the world. Tonight, we ask for direction as we discuss the issues before us, and we just know that each and every one of us is here tonight to serve the best we can and to ensure that the future of Batavia is a bright and prosperous one for future generations to savor and enjoy. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Callahan, you want to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, do please call the roll.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Attack.
Here.
Stark.
Here.
Chansett.
Wolf.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Holman.
Here.
Sam.
Here.
Vasiliyan.
Here.
Serone.
Here.
McFadden.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all fourteen elected members of the City Council are present and accounted for this evening's meeting, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Sparks, as Chairman of Governmental Services, would you present this, please?
There are none that I know of, so...
Very good. And then moving to item number five, which is the Consent Agenda. Would you present that, please, as Chairman of Governmental Services?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we accept the place on file, A, the Joint Committee of the Hole Minutes for May thirteenth and May twenty-first, 2013; B, the Public Utility Minutes for April sixteenth, 2013; C, the Government Service Minutes for April twenty-second, 2013; D, the Community Development Minutes for March twenty-sixth and April twenty-ninth, 2013; E, the Community Development City Service Minutes for April twenty-third, 2013; F, the Tree Commission Minutes for February sixth, 2013; G, the 2013 Post-Issuance Tax Compliance Report; H, the May 2013 Building Report. And for under approvals, I have I, June seventh, 2013 payroll, an amount of $741,830.94; the June seventh, 2013 payable, an amount of $713,814.37; Item K, the City Council Minutes for May twentieth and June third, 2013; Item L, Ordinance thirteen dash twenty-eight, the Intergovernmental Agreement with Aurora Township Reference to Safety Trailer; Item M, to approve Deputy City Clerk Appointment; Item nine, or N, Resolution thirteen dash eighty-two dash R, the NIPA Board Representatives; Item O, Resolution thirteen dash seventy-six dash R, award the Electric Directional Boring Contract, Archon Construction Company Incorporated, an amount of $172,155; Item P, Ordinance thirteen dash twenty-nine, annexation of Carlisle Road Path owned by Batavia School District; Item Q, Resolution thirteen dash eighty-five dash R, accepting the deed for parcel behind 225 South Harrison Street; Item R, approve the Class F Liquor License for the Batavia Park District Windmill City Fest Beer Tent. I move that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Clark, for the approval of the Consent Agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Who is that, Attack? Second was...
Your voices are sounding similar. Moved by Alderman Attack. Second by Alderman Attack, moved by Alderman Sparks. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Motion's approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is Resolution thirteen dash eighty-three dash R, Intergovernmental Agreement with Kane County for Animal Control Contract. Alderman Wolf, do you have that under City Services, please?
It's listed as Government Services. It's actually City Services. This is our contract with King Candy Animal Control. They do provide animal control pickup for the city, and this is a new contract that would extend the contract term from April thirtieth of this year and add an additional year and thereafter for a further additional one year. They have reduced the fees quite a bit this year. I don't know that that'll stay the same for the next few years, but they have changed their fee program for it. This goes back to, I think, 2007 or 2008 when we started this. And if there aren't any questions, I make the motion that we recommend Resolution thirteen dash eighty-three dash R, Resolution exercising an option to renew for one year an intergovernmental agreement for animal control services between the City of Batavia and Kane County.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of the Resolution thirteen eighty-three dash R, the one-year extension of the intergovernmental agreement with Kane Counties for the animal control contract. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Consent Agenda is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item number six, which is the Main Street Report. Kirk Hageman is here. Kirk?
Good evening, everyone. As some of you know, Main Street is really ramping up into our busy season right now. This past May alone, we had obviously a huge success with Cocktails in the Park, and as far as volunteer hours, the numbers that everyone likes to hear, we had one hundred and thirteen Main Street volunteers that donated two hundred and eighty-seven hours of time towards their meetings, programs, and events. We did have some business movements as well, Twisted Images relocated to a new location on Wilson Street, and Taqueria Elsa's Own opened on Island Avenue, both in May. Couple successes that we've had recently, the Farmer's Market has kicked off with a big bang in its new location on River Street, although it's only been up and running a couple of weeks now. Several of our vendors have completely sold out on the days that they've been there, so that's been extremely well received. As well as the movement to River Street, it's allowed us to really show it as a destination for people to come down and make a day out of it on Saturday. Along with that, we've been able to partner with a lot of the local businesses to get them involved. Pal Joey's has been providing pizza slices. Also, Mio's been serving crepes. We have Andre's Food Truck serving breakfast tacos, and the Instrument Exchange has been opening up early to provide music as well during the market there. The Green Walk also did occur over the weekend. However, it was a little bit dampened by rain, but we still actually did have record numbers from where it has been in the past. So that's always good to see. So the change of day and time from last year was definitely a positive effect on that. As I said, we're really ramping up into our busy season. Lots of things coming up that you'll hear more about. Feel free to visit the Main Street website, downtownbatavia.com, or call the Main Street office at (630) 761-3528. Farmer's Markets are continuing every Saturday from eight to twelve on River Street. We do have a few more vendors that are coming in as the season continues as well. Wednesdays, starting June nineteenth, so tomorrow through August seventh, the Park District has their River Rhapsody Concerts that are starting. Music Matters also has a new summer concert series that begins the first and third Friday of July and August at 7:00 PM at the Peg Bon Center. And Shakespeare &amp; Clark is gearing up with the Comedy of Errors on Fridays through Sundays from July twenty-sixth through August eleventh, and then also Twelfth Night of the Living Dead on Thursdays through Saturdays from August first through tenth. So, said any other, anyone want more information, feel free to visit the Main Street website or call the office, but we look forward to seeing everybody down there because as I said, this is really our busy season ramping up, and we're looking forward to seeing all everyone from Batavia down there.
I have gotten a couple calls from folks wondering if you're still going to have the party on the Sunday before Labor Day, and I'm led to believe you are.
Oh, the Block Party, yes. That is kind of the end of our busy season. We kind of closed down with the Block Party there, so that is definitely planned for...
You've already got residents that are inviting their neighbors or friends from out of town to be here, so...
Well, we've been getting a lot of that lately, actually, with everybody I run into says the Block Party, cocktails in the park, and also now I'm getting a lot of people's comments about the Farmer's Market as well. So it's definitely been well received, and a lot of the changes have been made recently. So, thank you.
Keep up the great work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our hats off to Main Street. Any questions from the Council? Thanks, Kirk. Okay, item seven, I don't see him director, or we had planned to honor Jeff Grazer for his thirty-nine years of ESDA service, including as many years as the Director, and he's been having some health issues, and I know we weren't sure he was going to be here. So we are going to keep inviting him till we get him down here, because we have some stuff to give him in appreciation for his many years of service. Okay, and moving to item number eight, you've all received a memo from me in which I'm going to ask for your confirmation of my appointment of Alderman David Brown to serve as Mayor Pro Tem, and Alderman Alan Wolf to be officially named as the city's representative to the Tri-City Ambulance Board. Do I have a motion for approval there?
I move we approve that resolution.
Second. Moved by Vasiliyan, second by O'Brien, for the approval of the confirmation of the appointments. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
I should probably abstain from this, but I want everybody to know that I certainly support Alderman Wolf for the Tri-City Ambulance.
Okay.
We're going to vote for it because you're...
It was the vice versa.
Neither one of them pays a dime, so...
Another meeting to go to.
Well, that being the case, I'll vote on it, then.
You're here for the meeting. I have to go somewhere else for the meeting.
Okay. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Resolution thirteen dash eighty-four dash R is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item number eleven, which is Resolution thirteen dash eighty-seven dash R, Temporary Amendments to the City Council Meeting Process. Who wants to present this one?
I'm sure it would be government's... I guess I will. We're adopting a certain temporary procedures for meetings of the City Council and Joint Committees of the Hole. How we shall do this is, on the Joint Committees, we will follow this procedure. A, a single agenda shall be created for the Joint Committee Meeting of the Hole, be called the J-Cow. B, the mayor shall facilitate the general items on the agenda. C, aside from Consent Agenda and general items, individual items on the agenda shall be identified as to the committee to what they are related, and the chairman of such committee shall facilitate the discussion thereon. D, during discussion of any issue on the agenda, any member of the City Council shall have the right to participate through discussion, as well as the making and seconding of motions. E, matters of the public shall appear on the agenda immediately following the Consent Agenda, and in the absence of a Consent Agenda immediately following items added or removed for the agenda. The public shall be advised that the remarks to be made during this time should be limited to matters not appearing on this evening's agenda, it being the intention of the City Council to allow reasonable commentary on the agenda items during discussion of the items themselves. However, regardless of the above, individual commentary and overall periods for commentary from the public shall be limited in time, depending on the meeting circumstances as determined and approved by the City Council or J-Cow. I move that we pass Resolution thirteen dash eighty-seven dash R, adopting certain temporary procedures for meetings of the City Council and Joint Committees of the Hole.
Second. Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Wolf, for the approval of Resolution thirteen dash eighty-seven dash R, Temporary Amendments to the City Council Meeting Process. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Alderman Serone?
On D, should we add that we all have the right to vote in each committee? Doesn't state that anywhere, just that we can all discuss it. It doesn't, and we did decide that we do all have the rights, so...
Want to make an amendment to it, just saying that...
Yeah, I'll amend Resolution thirteen dash eighty-seven dash R with the addition under item D that all members of the J-Cow meeting are eligible to vote on items.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman Serone, that we amend item D under the City Council procedures to include the fact that all members participating should have the right to vote at the meeting. Any discussion on that? Kirk, call the roll on the amendment, please.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Amendment is approved. Fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, now we have a motion and second for the approval of Resolution thirteen dash eighty-seven dash R as amended. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll on the resolution, please.
Sparks.
Aye.
O'Brien.
No.
Callahan.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Sam.
Aye.
Vasiliyan.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Attack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Resolution thirteen dash eighty-seven dash R is approved. Thirteen yes, one no, none absent. Okay, moving to item number twelve, which is the Administrator's Report this evening. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. We had our first orientation session, six-thirty this evening, and we went through Administration, HR, Economic Development, and Finance. We have another session tomorrow evening, which is Public Works, and so anybody who's interested should meet at six-thirty over the Public Works Building. I want to remind people that the potential designs for the Science and Art Bridge Sculptures are over in the Fox River Room, and they'll be there for at least the next couple of weeks, and you're encouraged to go through, and anybody in the community is encouraged to go through and view them and leave their comments. They will also be, we'll get some comments from some professional sculptors, get those to the City Council, at which time you'll bring that number down to, say, three or four, or whatever pleases you for each of those, those science or art, and then they'll make some models for you to have another round of examination and make a final choice. I did receive word from the sculptors who are doing the Back in Time, the Potawatomi Indian Sculpture and Windmill, that it's on the way towards being complete. They're working on the windmill now. They have the glass part of it done. Most of the bronze work is done, and they believe it'll be, it will be erected around August twenty-fourth in time for the Block Party. And I think I mentioned at the committee meeting that we do have both of the bulldogs, the painted bulldogs, and Public Works is working on a, on stands for them, and so those will be temporarily located on the bridge till the final sculptures are done. I wanted to thank Alderman Clark and Peggy Colby, our Finance Director, and my wife, Donetta. I went out to River Street Friday afternoon and kind of spiced up some of the planters and the pots, and then went to some of the businesses to get them to hopefully make a commitment to do some watering, and I think there, if you go out there, it looks very nice. We've gotten a couple of remarks and some input from some of our downtown residents, actually just a couple of them about the fact that we're asking the residents in the northeast quadrant to park in the Baptist Church Lot. I just want to reiterate to the Council that we felt that we had to experiment with this for a few months at a minimum to see what the usage is in the, underneath the parking deck and in the first level parking deck is by customers of the restaurants and the businesses, so we can try and achieve the balance between providing, you know, comfortable and convenient parking areas for our residents, but not hinder the business of River Street. So the police will be looking and seeing what the parking usage is at different days, Monday through Friday, or on the weekends, and at different times of the day, and if they establish that there's really some vacancies, then maybe we can change that location for a few people. I don't think it impacts very many, but in case you hear something, we are looking at this. It's the only way to try and gauge it is by kind of getting employees and the residents to not park there for a while and see what the real issue is, so that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Any questions of the City Administrators this evening? Alderman Stark.
Bill, I've noticed that Self Man Man looks darker than he was before he went away. Has he just been polished? Is that a new color?
He was, he is darker. He was, as you know, he was sent back to the original foundry in Colorado where the original people totally stripped off the patina under the guidance of the original artist, and that's the patina she decided on. It is a little darker, but yeah, it's not a mistake or anything like that. And then I did have a comment about whether the statue was facing the right way. The position of the statue was run by the artist, and that is the position of the statue, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, moving to committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of meetings to announce. Community Development does not have anything on the Joint Committee Meeting tomorrow evening, but I do want to report that Historic Preservation is going to be meeting tomorrow at 5:30. There's a few items on their agenda, mostly certificate of appropriatenesses, and then the Zoning Board will be meeting at seven o'clock on Wednesday, the nineteenth. Couple items on their agenda, most importantly, the first discussion on the Walgreens is coming back to us. So that starts at seven o'clock, and that's all I have.
I kind of get the word that the discussion on Walgreens is not going to go a long time, that there's more things that have to be worked on there, so I'm not thinking that that's going to be a long meeting, just so everybody knows. Okay, Public Utilities, Alderman Clark.
Tomorrow night, we're having a lesson in the electric utility, so there's an overview. There's a memo that was put out by Gary Holm that has all the terms and terminology that you'll be hearing a lot of. There's also going to be a discussion on the Fermilab Memorandum of Understanding, and then there's an executive session regarding electric power purchase, so tomorrow's kind of a busy public utility night. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? City Services, Alderman Wolf.
Since I guess nobody else wants to touch it, Garage Sale Regulations Discussion will be tomorrow night. I guess I'll show up for that one. That is the only thing we have on the agenda from City Services. I would like to remind everybody again that garbage pickup days will change at the end of this month, going into July, so make sure to check out the city website for all the information on that, and if you want to change sizes on your recycling bin or garbage cans. Thank you.
Okay, City Service, excuse me, Government Services, Alderman Sparks.
Thank you. Government Services will bow down to Public Utilities and let them have the meeting,